We good?
Good.
All right. Seeing to order, Commissioner Lowry, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd like to please stand. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
All right. This is the time of year where we do the election of officers. So this will be item number one, the election of officers. At this time, we will elect the Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary. Nominations are required, and a second and a majority vote is required to elect. We will now elect the officers. And these nominations, again, are now for Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. Do we have any nominations? Commissioner Langford?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would like to nominate a slate, if you wouldn't mind. Vice Chair Rosine for Chair, Secretary Harris for Vice Chair, and Commissioner Celine for Secretary.
Great. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none. Staff, shall we proceed to a vote?
Yeah, no second is actually required, so we can just go ahead and proceed to the vote. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations to the new Chair, Chair Rosine, the new Vice Chair, Vice Chair Harris, and the new Secretary, Secretary Celine.
Best guys.
I'll start with the microphone. Congratulations. Why don't we go ahead and get started? And moving on to public comments. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, but that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments two, three minutes or less. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? All right, seeing none. Moving on to the next item. Request for Continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
Yes, Chair, there'll be a request for continuance on item number four.
Okay. Then we can move on to consent items. Item number two, the minutes of June 20th, 2024. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on these minutes from June 20th? Any speakers? Okay, seeing none. We make a... Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for those minutes along with Mr. Moser's edits.
We get a second?
Second.
All right. Call for a vote.
The motion carries six zero with Chair Rosine Abstaining.
All right. Moving on, item number three, the minutes of August 8th, 2024. Anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes from August 8th? All right, seeing none. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes as well, along with Mr. Moser's edits.
All right, can we get a second?
All second.
All right, let's call for a vote.
The motion carries four zero with Commissioners Barto, Harris, and Lowry Abstaining.
All right, next item. Item four, Uptown Newport Development Agreement, Second Amendment, PA 2024-0078. Site location is 4311 Jamboree Road between MacArthur and Birch. I think that staff requested this item be continued. So we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing. Does anyone have any comments from the audience regarding the continuance only? All right, seeing none. Can we get a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
And a second?
Second.
All right, let's call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, next item. Item number five, Tanner's Tobacco Appeal. This is PA 2023-0032. Site location is 2233 West Balboa Boulevard. Staff, do you have a presentation for us this evening?
Yes, we have Associate Planner Jenny Tran has a presentation.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Rosine and Commissioners. My name is Jenny, and I'm the planner for this project for Tannar's Tobacco Appeal at 2233 West Balboa Boulevard. This project is for a minor use permit specifically to add a Type 20 off-sale beer and wine ABC license to an existing tobacco retail store. This property is located here on the peninsula. You can see that it is close to the public beach, as well as in proximity to the Newport Pier and MacFadden Square. So this map shows these zoning districts for this property, as well as the surrounding area. So the area in the light pink color is for mixed use with commercial and residential development, and towards the north is properties that are zoned primarily residential in the residential zoning districts. As part of projects that request an alcohol license, the police department does review the project, and for this project, the police department is unsupportive of the request. This property is located and was called Reporting District 15, which is the highest crime area in the city. As previously shown on the vicinity map, it's located next to the public beach, pier, and MacFadden Square, and access to alcohol in this area would increase the burden on police resources. This item went to the zoning administrative hearing on May 30th, where it was denied, and Resolution Number CA 2024-033 was adopted for the denial of the minor use permit. The applicant filed an appeal on June 11th for the following reasons: inconsistency with similar approvals, misrepresentation of crime statistics, limited availability of off-sale licenses in this area, community support and mitigating measures. Additional justification was provided detailing their appeal. So the first point is the inconsistency with similar approvals. There's two main types of ABC licenses requested in the city. The first one is on-sale ABC licenses. These are typically approved for restaurants where alcohol is consumed on the premise and not taken into public areas. The second one, which is what this project is for, is for off-sale ABC licenses, which are not historically approved in this specific area. It's for consumption of alcohol off-site. So this table below shows the existing current off-sale ABC licenses in this area. As you can see, the first four were originally issued between 1984 to 1992, and there's only been one current one that's existing for an internet sales-only off-sale license. The second point was the misrepresentation of crime statistics, especially how they relate to off-sale licenses. So RD 15 is... has an ABC crime count that is 675% over the citywide average. Alcohol-related crimes are exacerbated by proximity to the beach and the pier. So this table shows the subject property, as well as those locations with the off-sale licenses. To note that these... and these are for the 2022 and 2023 calls for service for the police department. It should be noted that the ones for the subject property are not necessarily for Tannar's Tobacco, but it's for the property itself, which has several commercial uses. And you can see that their numbers are much lower than the other sites that have the existing off-sale licenses. The last one is for a residential home with the internet sales only, which is why their number is much lower, but it is of the police department's opinion that adding the off-sale license would increase the numbers for the subject property. Next is the limited availability of off-sale licenses. So as you can see, there is a low number of off-sale licenses within this area, and this limitation of off-sale licenses is part of the police department's ongoing effort to reduce alcohol-related crimes in this area. It is... especially to prevent consumption of alcohol on public beaches or public areas on the peninsula. And as shown on the table, four of those five current off-sale licenses in this reporting district were issued between 1984 and 1992, and only one of the five was a recent one. It's for online sales only. The applicant stated that there were no public correspondences received in opposition, which is true. There are no public correspondences received, either in support or opposition, for both the zoning administrator hearing and for this hearing tonight. We did have one comment during the zoning administrator hearing, where a member of the public thought the city should be more mindful of ABC licenses allowed in the city. Finally, the applicant did offer additional measures to limit alcohol sales, such as limited volume of sales, limited hours, and increased security. The police department also included conditions of approval should the minor use permit be approved. However, they're still not recommending approval of this use permit. There's just one red line to the resolution requested, specifically what's highlighted, where it states RD 15's ABC crime count is 914, which is 675% over the citywide average. The 805 was a miscalculation, but the 675 is still a widely large percentage over the citywide average crime count. Staff is recommending to conduct this de novo public hearing, find this project exempt from CEQA under Article 18, Section 15270, and to adopt Resolution Number PC 2024-018 to affirm the decision of the zoning administrator's denial of the minor use permit. Thank you. I'm available for questions. The applicant is also here for questions, and also we have Wendy from the police department who's present for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions of staff?
Who was the ZA at the time of the hearing? The ZA hearing?
Our Principal Planner, Ben Zadiba.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. Commissioners, any ex parte communication? I'll start on my left.
I was contacted by a neighbor and business owner in the area.
All right. I visited the property and actually spoke with the appellant.
None.
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 I received a few phone calls from neighboring parcel owners that were concerned about the issuance of the license here.
Okay. And with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. The appellant wish to make a presentation?
Good evening, council members and valuable members of the community. My name is Mila Tannar. I'm the spokesperson for Tannar Tobacco, and today I'm here to appeal the decision of the zoning administrator regarding the denial of our application for Type 20 alcohol license. Before I get into the appeal, I would like to take a minute here to introduce ourselves and also the reason why we are pursuing the Type 20 license. Gokul 4T, also known as Tannar Tobacco, we've began operations in the Balboa Peninsula over a decade ago. We're a licensed tobacco retailer, and the business is wholly owned and operated by my father, Yelson, who's here today. The core of our business is that we sell tobacco products, including a robust selection of cigars that cater to specialty and recreational cigar smokers. The proposed addition of the Type 20 license is the fact that, in the recent years, the state of California have taken measures to limit the sale or ban the sale of certain tobacco products, which adversely affected our business in a very drastic measure. So we are pursuing the Type 20 license as an ancillary addition to our existing tobacco license to recuperate for the losses that we have experienced as part of the banning of tobacco products, certain tobacco products. The addition of this license does not indicate a shift in our business model. It is merely an expansion of our current product selection to offer additional complementary products for our customers. As you can see on the floor plan, our business will continue to operate primarily as a tobacco retailer with a limited amount of square footage, which is about 25% dedicated to the sale of wine and beer. As stated by the staff report, I have cited multiple appeal reasons in the application. However, today I would like to talk about two of the main primary points. First of all, being the inconsistencies with the approval process of similar licenses in the alcohol area. Historical precedent shows that other businesses in our district, RD 15, have successfully obtained similar alcohol licenses despite the known higher crime rates and the over-concentration of licenses in the area. Assessment of prior business applications or those licenses found that, under the similar circumstances of our district, the assessment found that they would not anticipate an increase in crime-related... sorry, crime and alcohol-related activity. Now, this is contradictory to the current stance of our application, which, on the contrary, says it would exacerbate the current state of the district. Now, I'm conscious of the fact that each application is reviewed with considerations given to unique circumstances, such as their neighborhoods, their business operations, and so on and so forth. In our case, the primary factor in reviewing our application was the neighborhood location and the fact that it was... its proximity to the public beach and the pier. I would like to highlight the fact that RD 15 is a beachfront district. By design, it has one of the two piers that's located in the city, and it does have a higher concentration of businesses because of its nature. And consequently, with its design, it makes almost every license holder close to the beach. But in our vicinity, there are about eight bars and restaurants that are located directly or around the beach area. In fact, 7-Eleven, which is a off-sale license holder in this area, is approximately 500 feet away from the beach and not that far away from the pier. The point in highlighting these precedent cases and also the considerations with the district itself is to highlight the fact that historically such factors were not a direct deterrent for the denial of similar licenses. So there's an opportunity in the past that were given to these businesses, but that opportunity is not present for our case. Second point I would like to highlight is misinterpretation, or more or less an overemphasis on crime statistics. In RD 15 and our Census tract, there are 65 on-sale licenses compared to five off-sale licenses, which means that 93% of the license holders are on-sale businesses compared to only seven. Given this disproportionality in license type, the crime statistics rely heavily on the activity generated by on-sale license holders. This is not to undermine the efforts of the police department, that there's an effort to reduce crime and maintain the public safety. However, off-sale license holders are not the major contributor to the overall statistics. If we take a look at Newport Beach Police Department's 2023 Crime and Alcohol-Related Statistics Report, in RD 15, there were 8,707 dispatch events. On the bottom table, you can see the five off-sale license holders and their calls for service within the same year, which was approximately 300 events. You can see that the total dispatch originating from off-sale licenses was only 3%. Not to say that all of these numbers are associated with alcohol-related activity, however, this shows that there's a... it shows the ratio from an off-sale perspective. In conclusion, our off-sale Type 20 license is intended as a small complementary addition to our existing business model. We're not proposing to become a full-fledged alcohol-oriented business. This is a mere effort to stay in business and continue to operate. The issuance of the additional license also, because of the given our nature of, you know, locally owned and small business, should not have the similar impact or should not have the same impact compared to larger chain stores. Throughout the application process, we've demonstrated our commitment to be a responsible and compliant business operation. We've enhanced our security measures, we've addressed the concerns raised by police department that concerned our business and similar sentiments raised by ABC. We've addressed those promptly, and we're willing to cooperate further with the city and the police department to ensure that the potential impacts should not adversely affect our community. I thank you for your time and greatly appreciate the efforts of the police department, also the staff during the course of our application, and I'll open the floor for any questions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for the appellant?
A quick question. Ms. Tannar?
Tannar.
Tannar. I think you did a great job representing your interest. I had a question on your site plan. There were three highlighted areas. It looked like wine cooler, beer cooler, and a third that I couldn't make out. What was that supposed to be?
So the beer cooler and the wine cooler, and that is... Oh, that's the cash register.
Oh, so you're probably just moving it from somewhere else? Okay, understood. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions for the appellant?
I have a question. You said you enhanced your security measures. What are your security measures and what was exactly or would be enhanced?
We've increased our surveillance measures in the area where every corner of the business is now clearly and 24/7 operate... visible, recorded, surveilled. And I think that also has an alerting system that goes directly to the PD.
PD, and that's the enhancement. And then who... Do you have employees or do you just your family run and operate the business?
Family-run and operated. My father himself.
Have you received any training or any background in terms of alcohol sales or anything affiliated with liquor distribution?
Not yet, but I'm aware that it's part of the conditions, which will, if we, in the event that we get our license, it will be implemented.
And... I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions... excuse me, questions for the appellant? Okay. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on this item?
Chair Rosine and members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Moser. I did notice that small error in that percentage in fact number four. And on the following page, I noticed that there's a very tiny disagreement between the Planning Division and the police department on how many Ls there are in the word "pavilions", and I believe the police department has corrected as a single L in it. More substantively, on the issue of the consistency or inconsistency of this application with the one that was approved in the same Reporting District 15 for a retail wine sales operation. I did look at the agenda materials from 2021 when that was approved, and I noticed, according to comparing the two police reports, the number of which... and that is not only in the same reporting district, but the same Census tract. And according to the two police reports, the number of off-sale licenses in that Census tract had gone down materially from 10 in 2020 to 6 in 2023, or apparently five now. So they'd been cut nearly in half. Although, at the same time, in that Census tract, the number of on-sale licenses had nearly doubled, going from 33 in 2020 to 65 in 2023. So apparently, there is indeed an effort to cut down on the number of off-sale. I don't quite understand the logic of so rapidly increasing the number of on-sale licenses in the same Census tract, or the logic of why one off-sale operation is okay. The police report just said no problem with it, and this one is a problem. I assume it is because that one... that this one is in a even more concentrated area within an over-concentrated area and closer to the beach, whereas the previous one was in the Canary Village area, closer to the harbor rather than the beach, and perhaps a less over-concentrated neighborhood, but still over-concentrated. I'm not sure about that. I also noticed that the previous application was filed by the wife of a recently-elected council member. Not that that would have anything to do with why the two might be treated differently. And I stand by the comment I made to the zoning administrator. I think it's good to see that the staff is not just recommending approval of every alcohol license that comes along. One final odd thing I noted is if you look at the table on handwritten page 59, which is the police department's table of existing licenses, it shows that this suite has an on-sale license, and I'm assuming that's inactive, but a little puzzling to see that because there was no mention of any on-sale activity happening at this suite. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Okay. Staff, would you like to comment and... No? No comment from staff?
No, no comment.
All right. Well, then, we will go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the Commission for Discussion. Commissioners?
Yeah, I'll start.
You want more?
Yeah, I'll start. Thank you. Chair. I think the zoning administrator was accurate in their findings. I've spent some time down there. I've been here in the city for 43 years. The fact that the establishment under, you know, the question is within 20 yards of Lynch's carryout is so prevalent with that. The fact that there... we are in the midst of somewhat of a homeless or vacant situation down there. I feel like more accessibility to any alcohol would only exacerbate that issue. I think that there are plenty, as it sits right now, of options. If somebody wants to go buy off-site liquor, they have opportunity to go to pavilions or stores of such in the neighborhood, of which there's management, protocol, enforcement, and there's a history of knowing how to deal with these type of situations. I think the location... and I'm sympathetic to the business. I understand you want to do the best you can, but I think the location is not appropriate for the license that you're looking for. And I am not going to be in support of what you're looking for. And I will be supporting the zoning administrator.
All right, any other Commissioner comments?
Yeah, I'll just kind of say the same. When I was looking to support the findings that we need to support, it was number five, detrimental to the harmonious and orderly growth of the city. It seems to me that City Council, Planning Commission, Police Department, over decades, have had a precedence to... to kind of keep these off-site licenses at bay, and I think it's done a good job. So I'd want to kind of stick with the precedence of that and that it wouldn't be a good option for us to have this here so close to the beach. If you've been down there recently, MacFadden Square, it's a little bleak. So the timing isn't great for the applicant because we have real problems down there. Police department has real problems that we're working with. So I likewise will not incline to support approval.
All right, Commissioners, any other comments? Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion. Let me take a look at this here.
So my motion is to deny the appeal and to support the zoning administration, zoning administrators' denial of the application, if I said that accurately.
Thank you, Commissioner Elmore. The Resolution Number PC 2024-18 pretty much encompasses that, so if the commission would like to just adopt that, then I think that's consistent with, with the recommendation and the action here.
Okay, do we have a second? Mr. Langford?
All second.
All right, then we will call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving on to the next item. Staff and Commissioner Items, item number six, motion for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? All right, seeing none. Item seven, report by the Community Development Director to request any future matters for which a planning commission member would like to be placed on a future agenda.
Yes, Chair Rosin, High Memorial Deputy Director. I just want to provide an update regarding our housing element amendment. At the last meeting, I mentioned that the City Council initiated amendment to amend the housing element, to remove the vote from our rezoning program. We have submitted that amendment to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. They have reviewed it and found that that revision would still allow our housing to remain in statutory compliance with state law, and so we are going to be bringing that amendment for your review and recommendation to the City Council at the next Planning Commission meeting on September 5th, and then we have two other items on that agenda.
Thank you for that report. Anyone from the audience wish to comment on this? Okay, seeing none. Any requests for excused absences? All right, seeing none, then we are adjourned.
Hey, congrats, Chair. Well done.